You give me a number for Jerry. To begin.
Okay, I think we're about ready to get started. Mr. Palmer, you on?
I'm here, Judge.
Mr. Palmer.
Can you hear me?
Ms. KK, are you on?
Judge, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Gary. I'm gonna go in the courtroom right now.
Do you hear it, Gary?
Can you hear me? I don't know what's wrong. It says I'm unmuted.
Oh, goodness.
I don't know.
Then can hear you. Okay, so it's on there then.
Should be good. Anybody here?
Can you hear me?
Only other thing to do is restart the whole computer and... You got me, Shiv, I can get him off the phone. I'll get him on the phone. So we won't have a recorded session. Hey, Gary.
Hey.
Yeah, we can hear you. Now we hear you.
Just leave it on.
Yeah, I'll leave it on. I'm gonna leave you on my phone.
I work.
Yeah, it's working.
Is he unmuted on his iPad? Is he unmuted on his iPad?
Unmuted iPad.
Okay.
How you feeling?
Yeah. Everybody can hear you, but y'all...
Okay. We got you now, though. We got you on the phone.
Okay, let's get started. It's ten after ten, and we're gonna ask for Danny Benson to open us up in prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come before you as humble as we know how this morning, Lord. Lord, I ask you, Lord, to lead us and guide us in the directions that this county needs to go. Lord, we pray that there be unification in this county. Help those that is in charge of the United States of America, Lord. Lord, I thank you, Jesus, right now for your blessings upon each individual here today. And, Lord God, as we go forward, begin to continue to bless Newton County. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Well, first of all, congratulations, Luke Benson, as a new member of our court. I appreciate you being here this morning. I know you got a busy week coming up ahead of you, but appreciate you being here and working with you. I called meeting orders. We took care of the four of all the present here this morning. We acknowledge any guesses here this morning also. And we will start out with a consent agenda. And if y'all will look over that and, if appropriate, make a motion to pass it. You will notice that the previous meeting is not in your package. I hear a motion.
I'm making a motion that we accept the consent agenda as it is.
I second. Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. White that we approve the consent agenda. There's no discussion, all in favor? Dick, you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Five oh. We're gonna shuffle our order numbers just a little bit, and we're gonna start out with number five. And it is discussed and appropriate to approve the refund of nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and twelve cents. Refund to taxpayer on property ID two, four, eight, nine, three. And this is Melissa Burke.
Good morning, everyone. This is another one of those refunds where taxes were previously paid at a closing by Toledo Ben Title. And then, two weeks later, their lender paid it. This appears to be made a refi, refinance. And the jury for our auditor has looked it over, and she agrees that the nine seventy-four twelve is due to Noah Ben and Carrie Ann Hughes. Toledo Ben Title and Southside Bank paid it.
Which one are you gonna pay it back to?
I'm paying it back to Noah Ben and Carrie Ann Hughes because Toledo Ben Title doesn't want it back. The taxpayer, they said send it to the taxpayer, Noah Ben and Carrie Ann Hughes. Southside Bank is no longer their lender. You don't send it to them.
So you don't send it...
And the tax law says you send it to the taxpayer. The title companies, I can get something from them if y'all would like to see it. They do not want tax payments back. Once they close an escrow file, it's over. You send it to the taxpayer, whoever paid it. But in a refi, there's no one else involved, just the taxpayer. In other words, they found a better rate with another lien.
So to cover Newton County and especially the tax factor and cesa... We got a paper trail to identify all that?
We do. Definitely have a paper trail.
I hear a motion.
I like that motion that we approved the refund of nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and twelve cents to Noah Ben and Carrie Ann Hughes of property tax overpaid.
I second. Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson that we refund the nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and twelve cents to the property ID two, four, eight, nine, three. Is any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Thank you, Ms. Melissa. Now we'll go back to item number one. Item number one is discussed and appropriate to approve the update on end of funeral cost. And our cost right now, we reimburse the funeral home is three hundred and fifty dollars. So I had Ms. Crystal to do some investigative work for the counties that surround us, and I'm gonna let her give you that report.
So right now, Jasper County, their burial cost is two hundred and fifty dollars, with the transfer being set at three hundred and fifty dollars. So Main County currently has no end of burial program. Then August Day County, their burial cost is four hundred dollars. Howard County also has no end of burial program.
So I just brought this subject up because there has been some question about some funeral expenses. So this has been in place for quite some time, so I just brought it before y'all. If you don't wanna take no action, just say, you know, take no action. If you wanna leave it at three hundred and fifty dollars. If you wanna change it, we'll change it.
It's worked in the past, right?
Worked in the past, yeah. And I think for surrounding counties, I think we're in line with the rest of the surrounding county. I just didn't wanna be, I didn't wanna be way off base with the rest of it.
I said there'd be no action.
So we are approving the update? No action. Okay, well, it say up...
Leave it like it is.
Don't say increase if they update, which... Okay. So you can make the motion as we update the policy instead of saying it's...
Right.
Just make it a formal motion.
Okay, well, I make a motion that we leave it as is and with no change.
I second that. Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. White that for the update, we're leaving all the end of funeral costs at the same amount as previous. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Number two is a discuss of appropriate take action on the now appeal from Esther Foster, two thousand and fifteen CDVG housing. Ms. Rhonda Alpert.
All right, so everybody should have what I've come across and investigated. I contacted Newton Cat again on Friday to make sure if there was any payment plan set up. And as of that date, none have been made. I contacted Angel at County Clerk again Friday, and she stated that the homeowner's niece and some lady that they hired to come in and try to fix the problem with the deed. As of right now, there's no proof of ownership to tie back to Esther Foster. There's a lot of undivided interest involved in that property. And there's over thirty-nine thousand dollars worth of taxes due. So I don't see how she's gonna at least be able to come up with half of those taxes to get a payment plan set up.
So you're asking the court to deny her the housing project two thousand and fifteen?
There should be, yeah.
So this, tell the court, what is the process if we deny her this?
The process is that she, after we, after the Commissioner's Court deny her, she has a chance to appeal it to Texas General Land Office. And after that, if they deny, it just stands as is. Whether she does it or not, I don't care. But there's too many issues involved to even put the county at that position.
So she's fully aware of the guidelines and her delinquency or deficiency as far as qualifying?
Yes, I sent her plenty of certified letters stating what she needed. After we took over, after we terminated Afton's contract, after we took over, I was reviewing everybody's contract, case files. I sent her several certified letters stating what she's needed. I went to buy her house. I signed documents, run over her, explained it to her. I don't know what else to do.
And I think there look like I counted twenty-two, twenty-two different people that are grantees along with her. So it's a lot of other interests, you know, other folk that has faithful over that property.
Yeah. Angel did send me the title that was under Pinky, and then she went and aired it through Woodrow. But there's nothing showing even airship deeds or anything that she, even saying the survey under that property is changing into her name. And yes, it's care of her for taxes, so therefore, she got that piece of property aired to her. And she owns that, she owns those taxes. I mean, she owes them.
Thirty-nine thousand, yeah.
Thirty-nine thousand. And I don't know why Newton Cat had, you know, the liquid at that point.
Yeah. Didn't pay taxes in years since it looked like nineteen ninety-six.
Now, the house is current, you know.
Ninety-three?
Ninety-six, I believe, last time I saw it, it paid something.
The house that she was living in was aired to her husband from Pinky. She finally got that straightened and put it in her name. Her husband was deceased in two thousand and eighteen, I believe. So she got that straightened, but her taxes are current on the house, but they're not current on the land taxes. My opinion, there's too many issues involved. Yes, she does need a house, but I just, I don't see it.
In other words, she don't meet the guidelines which we have to operate on her.
That's a lot.
I hear a motion. Well, we don't really have a choice. She don't meet the guidelines, and she do have an opportunity to appeal with the General Land Office, you said. So like, to keep us in Newton County adhering to the guidelines, we have to deny her. So I make the motion that we deny her.
I second.
She's had effort. She need to make some effort. Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson that we deny the appeal for Esther Foster on the two thousand and fifteen CDVG housing project. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Number three, a discussion of appropriate approved amendment to the salary of precinct two. So, Mr. White, you, you wanna explain that to us?
Sure.
It's not a budget amendment, this is just amending it, right?
Right.
Okay. I just want to make sure everybody is clear.
Yeah, bottom line, I want, the budget will cover what I'm asking. And the fact is that last year, I had my road foreman deceased early in the year, as most of us know, and I had to hire someone to take his place. And we started him in with start pay. And my plans were to increase it by year end at least to other operators, normal operating pay. Well, we had set in the budget to pay him normal, you know, standard operator pay. And he requested that I keep it at the start pay so that he would qualify for bill security and all that other benefits. But anyhow, so I had a couple of guys. One has been with me twenty years, and he voiced a concern about getting a, you know, a little bit more than some of the other guys because of his qualifications. And so I considered that, and that's what I'd like to do, is give him fifty cents an hour.
How much?
Fifty cents an hour.
Or does that put you...
Seventeen, seventeen fifty, I believe. Yeah, he's the one that, well, he's the most sought out greater operator in East Texas. And Jasper's been trying to get him, and they offered him twenty dollars an hour. Sabine County offered him nineteen dollars an hour. And so he put that to me, and I told him that I'll see it. You know, he does deserve, he operates, he manages my whole north end of my precinct by himself. Do all the trac-o and bulldozer, and he's my specialist actually. He's the best operator I got, by far.
And he's at seventeen right now, and you won't be giving fifty cents?
No, no. Yes, well, he was at seventeen oh six, with, yeah, seventeen oh six. So it's less than fifty cents, actually. It'd be forty-four cents an hour. Which adds up to about fourteen hundred dollars a year. And it's well within my budget, I've thought, with Sherri. Actually, a thousand forty dollars a year is what she numbers to get for.
He's transferring that from your budget?
No, my budget, my budget would be the same. It's just that instead of giving the guy with the start pay, instead of giving him the raise, I give it to this guy because he deserves it.
It's not changing your payroll budget.
No.
It's changing your operator's amount. You're maneuvering money from one spot to another, from one position to another. It's your, you got available money.
Right.
It won't cost the county anything, and you're just asking a request from the Commissioner Court for that approval.
Right.
Hear a motion?
Yeah, I make that motion that we approve the amendment on the salary for still flights operator commission of precinct two.
I respect that motion. Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. Benson that we approve the amendment for the salary for precinct two operator. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Come forward, discussion of appropriate to authorize the purchase of a new tractor for precinct number two?
Okay, I have an old Rohrman Hendrick tractor that, only tractor I have other than my sad bone. And we use it for, we use it for bush hogging on sides of roads and loading equipment, loading cupboards and whatnot. I have grapper on the front end of it. And we patched on it all this past year. And my mechanic is doing transmission, the transmission, but I've gone in it. And the mechanic told me that, you know, he recommend with all the issues that it has, that we'd be better off just canning that one. And so it's time and, like, Tom's given bought it used, and they got a lot of use out of it. And I really need, going forward, I really need tractors for... We got a lot of paved streets this past year, and the streets look fine, real nice looking streets. But we, right now, the grass has growed up on the sides of them, and it looks terrible. And I need, I really need a tractor to start getting caught up on my bush hogging.
Have you found a tractor you want?
Well, I've looked at the Kubota place and down at my Hendrick place, and I wanted to speak with you. I know you have Kubotas and have been having them for a while. And that's kind of what I'm leaning toward. But I noticed the last couple of times I was down at your place, you was having problems with Kubotas.
I've had some, but I would, I would go back with Kubota myself. Yeah.
Sixty horse? I agree. What's that? It's not big enough.
Hundred horse, nothing less than a hundred horse.
Okay. Am I...
Especially if you use a loader on front of?
Yeah.
Probably be all right for a bush hog. You got the single bush hog.
Right.
For a loader and bush hog, we need, I'm a tick, you need...
We'll have it.
Look at least a hundred horse.
Okay. We'll have that discussion, and I'll get out and get to bid with the auditor about purchase conditions.
Four-wheel drive?
Absolutely, four-wheel. Oh, yeah, no doubt. I learned that lesson the hard way.
You're asking us for the purchase file, but we're limited to fifty thousand dollars. You understand that?
Right, and that's why I didn't go larger than a sixty horse.
Well, you're strutting your tractor by a sixty horse because it meets the standard, it meets the criteria, but you don't have nothing extra. And always, in my opinion, I think you overdo it to make sure you've got something that... If you come up with something else you need to use it for, then this may apply to that.
Yeah.
So...
I agree.
That's the only problem, you're not gonna be able to buy what you need for fifty thousand.
Yeah, and that's the dilemma that I up against.
So what do we do, Lynn?
Well, we can table it for until the next court date. We need to do some more.
You need to get your numbers together.
Yeah.
And if it's over fifty thousand dollars, you need to get some bids and come back for approval. And if you want to, we'll table this as of now.
Yeah.
Make that motion.
I make the motion that we table this discussion or this item until we come up with some cool details on what's needed versus what we're gonna purchase.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson that item number four will be tabled at this time. All in favor? Five oh. Number five, we've already discussed, and number six is discussed and appointed bailiff. And let me do a little explaining here. The court does not have to own a bailiff, but I think it's be the interest of Newton County to hire one. And then, each court that needs a bailiff, we could provide them with that. Now, I'm not saying that they don't have to use it. They can use their own bailiff. But I would like to hire Mr. James Mitchell. hire Mr. James Mitchell, which is a constable of precinct three, two. And that way he would always be available for a bailiff, for a court. And so I would like for someone to make that motion.
Okay, there's no problem with conflicting interests on the two jobs?
No. No, and he has credentials to do both. And it's not a full-time job. It's only, only when court session is in session. Or right out.
Is this, is this a hourly wage or is this a hourly?
It's hourly wage and I think Otis Lane, you may, can enlighten us a little bit on the bailiff part?
There's a phone call right there. I have, I consider roads far and out there. Almost we had a two mile, maybe hour drive. He might not, he might not have. The clinic, I think it's like twenty-five or- Yeah, we have twenty-five, we set aside for that.
We just, we just want to make that provision for our courts to where they come up here and a certain day and then they have to go out and search for bailiff. And this way we already have one hired that be provided to them.
Also, that's where, that's where she has to, she has to, or example for, and- Well, he does take people, that's what I said.
Yeah, the constable.
Well, it's not costing him.
A rest of the town. And a H, H O fighter, H O, for sure.
Yeah.
It's because twenty thousand dollars had been adequate for him in the past. What's his name?
James Mitchell.
James Mitchell.
Something like that. And he's, he's always wanted to express the interest in the job. Go ahead.
I make the motion that we appoint James Mitchell for the bailiff job.
I second.
Motion been made and second, we appoint James Mitchell as the court bailiff for Newton County. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. We're going to combine seven, eight, and nine. And I'll read those off. And discuss if appropriate, extend COVID-nineteen Hurricane Laurel disaster and Hurricane Delta disaster until February the eighth, two thousand twenty-one.
I make the motion. I second.
Motion been made by Mr. Benson and second by Mr. White that we extend the COVID-nineteen Hurricane Laurel and Hurricane Delta declaration until February the eighth, two thousand twenty-one. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Uh, number ten is pay the bills and Miss Sherri, if you'll come around and identify that.
General fund, six hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. District Attorney State Fund, two thousand, one hundred and one dollars and thirty-one cents. Road and Bridge General, thirty-two thousand, five oh eight, oh nine. Road and Bridge Precinct One, twenty-three thousand, one sixty-one, eighty-nine. Road and Bridge Precinct Two, nineteen thousand, three seventy-one, sixty-four. Road and Bridge Precinct Three, twenty-five thousand, eight fourteen, thirty-one. Road and Bridge Precinct Four, twenty thousand, seven forty-two, ninety-two. Courthouse Security, one hundred and sixteen dollars and ten cents. DAW Grant, five thousand, one hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Commissioner Special Precinct One, fifteen thousand, seven twenty-one, ninety-eight. Commissioner Special Precinct Two, twenty-seven thousand, two seventy-three, thirty-three. Commissioner Special Precinct Three, eighty-three thousand, five seventy-one, thirty-five. Commissioner Special Precinct Four, sixty-six thousand, six fifty-nine, fifty-seven. Dedicated Road Precinct Three, forty thousand dollars. Record Persevation, one thousand, four hundred and twenty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Lateral Road Precinct Three, ten thousand dollars. Sheriff Contravan, eight hundred and eight dollars and thirty-nine cents. Solid Waste Disposal, thirty-one thousand, two eighty-seven, seventy-three. Motor Registration, five thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fourteen cents. Newton County Library, fourteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and two cents. Historical Operating, three thousand, five hundred and two dollars and two cents. FEMA Grant, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Grant, one million, two hundred and thirty-six thousand, six eighteen, fifty-four. Technology Fund, three forty-seven, eighty-nine. Total of all funds is two million, three hundred, twenty-one thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars and fifty-six cents.
Hear your motion to pay the bills?
Make that motion.
I second.
Motion been made by Mr. White and second by Mr. Thompson that we pay the bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. That's all we have on our agenda as of today. I want to remind the commissioners that we will be having workshops next week, so make sure y'all watch for details. Very important workshops coming up. We need to address several things. So with that in mind, hear motion to adjourn.
I make that motion. We adjourn.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Thompson and second by Mr. White, we adjourn, all in favor? It's ten forty, five, ten forty.
How you feeling?